Welcome to our official stamp cancellation for the town of Bridgewater. Glad to see everybody's here.
First of all, thank you everyone for coming out to this on our birthday, 125 years. It's something quite special for the town. And I want to thank the Sustro Stamp Club for this stamp cancellation. Is that the pictorial stamp cancellation? I have in my pocket the last one that I keep in my office at Town Hall from 2017, where we had the one for Bichenewiska Park, which also has the nice stamp on it for the park. So I have a couple of these that are on display, so whenever I'm meeting with developers or business people interested in coming to our town to start a new business, this is one of the things they see. And so to mark our 125th birthday with another, I find these, obviously they're unique, but they're also very special, I think it's very fitting. So thank you all for putting this together and for being here today.
Anyways, thank you everybody for coming for Bridgewater 125. And the Philatelic Society has asked us to produce a cancellation commemorating this event, so which we have done, and it's turned out with very positive reviews. And Canada Post is really pleased to be involved with supporting Philatelic Society and Bridgewater. So of course, it's just been a great time. So the council is officially released as of right now, and please take part in some of the festivities. We have coffee, tea, donuts, anything you folks like. Thank you very much.
Thanks for all that from us. Thanks folks.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. And as always, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaqie, the unceded and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. And we are privileged to be here. Agenda's been circulated. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Actually, there is one. So 12.1, which you may not have if you don't have the most recent copy of your agenda open, is under New Business. So 12.1 will be pension plan change that we discussed, and there's motions been emailed. So that's the only addition. Hearing no others, motion to approve the agenda is amended. Councillor Tanner, seconded by everyone on this side, Deputy Mayor Fergier, all those in favor. Those opposed, motions carried, thank you. I don't know if you have any presentations. Announcements, so the big one was, obviously this past weekend, we had our Harvest Moon Festival, huge success. So before I go any further, a big thanks to Pat and the whole team at the town, Jonathan Kraus, that helped put that on, and a huge thank you to Donna Hat, who was everywhere. I don't know how, she seemed to be in multiple places at the same time. But just an exceptional weekend. If you haven't, if you didn't see the boats on the water, then you hopefully will come across the photos on social media. Over 107 canoes, kayaks, stand-up paddleboards, with over 170 people on the Laheave, going up from Shipbird's Landing all the way up to under Veterans Memorial Bridge and back down. It was quite a sight to see in a long, long, long time since we've seen that much activity on the water. So thank you very much to everyone who put in a lot of time and effort into making that a great festival, some amazing music too. I think there were over 100 international students dancing to the last band before the fireworks down at Bichenewiska Park, and it was quite something to see as well. So thanks for everyone who came out, and of course, thanks to our staff and volunteer teams. Any other announcements? I have a couple for Energized Bridgewater. So just a note, there is a public event this Thursday at 6:00 PM at Furkenstein on King Street. And so there's, that's about Energized Bridgewater. And also, there's going to be a couple of public sessions that McGill University is setting up at the LCLC on September 26th, 27th, and 28th to display their research findings on energy poverty. And so they'll also be giving public talks at the LCLC at 10:00 AM on the 27th and 28th about the findings from their research on energy poverty. So if anyone's interested, you can also call the town and speak to someone at Energized Bridgewater for more information. If there's nothing else, I don't know if there's any members of the public that wish to speak before council on any items. Now's your chance. Not seeing anyone moving. Okay, so we have the August 12 minutes, regular meeting minutes and public hearing. Any errors or omissions on those? Hearing none, motion to approve the minutes is circulated, Councillor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fergier, all those in favor. Those opposed, motions carried, thank you. And then we're down to Community Development's got a couple of topics here, so information on the hemlock conservation project.
Okay, so councillors, you and the mayor. We, I'm here, okay, I'm gonna start again. My name is Nikita. I'm here to talk about the hemlock conservation project, the updates that's been going on since half of this fiscal year has gone by, and where the project sits at right now. So, perfect. A little overview of what we're going to be talking about today, starting with the town's strategy, strategy towards invasive species, a little bit background on the bug, the hemlock conservation project in general, what the project team is comprised of, what the steps are, the different phases of our project, tree inventory, pesticide treatment, community engagement outreach, and some time for questions. Just a general overview of the town's strategy towards invasive species, the protection of the health and safety of our forests and within our parks is an operational responsibility. Monitoring processes for invasive species and these pests is a high priority action plan identified in the open space plan that was introduced in 2021. The hemlock conservation is also a priority action plan under the town's EMPAL, the Municipal Physical Activity Leadership Strategy Plan, separately under the 2023, 2024, and 24, 25 fiscal years. Now, we've been talking about hemlock ulia dulcat since last year, and the last time I was here, we went through a whole big presentation, so I'm going to try to give a little refresher on that in just one slide. And what we commonly refer to as the bug here, and this time with some props I have with me, I actually brought you hemlock ulia dulcat to see in real life from our Marion Parks, not a happy thing, but just so you are able to look at what it actually looks like. Perfect, so it is an invasive species. It is a very small aphid-like insect, less than millimeters in length. It does feed on hemlock trees. It is easily identifiable by the white woolly substance when it's in the egg stages. The hemlock ulia dulcat also has a 90 to 95% mortality rate in our eastern hemlock tree species, and it does kill the trees within four to 15 years of infestation unless it is treated by pesticides. Hemlock ulia dulcat was first found in Nova Scotia in 2017, but it was likely here prior to this, and it was identified in Bridgewater in early 2023. And once staff started doing some research on it, we did bring it to council last year with reference to a grant application that we submitted for the project to start working on saving our eastern hemlock tree species against this invasive bug. So that is where the hemlock conservation project came into being. In a very brief way, the hemlock conservation project was initiated as a response to the growing threat of hemlock ulia dulcat in Bridgewater's parks and forests. With the discovery of HWA infestations in Nova Scotia, particularly in the southwestern counties, this project was designed to protect and preserve the town's eastern hemlock trees, which are also essential for our local ecosystem. And over the wide aim of this project is through, is to address this devastating impact through monitoring, treatment, and public involvement. When we submitted the grant and as an overall project, we did divide the project into three different phases, like we spoke about, the first one being tree inventory of our public parks, forests, and trails, which included assessment of tree health, marking and tagging of trees for the treatments, monitoring and collecting data. The second phase being pesticide treatment of these trees through two different methods, injection and spray treatment. And the third part, and also ongoing part, being public engagement and outreach. And the last time we were here to talk about the grant, the initial aim of this project was to look at Glen Allen Park, Woodland Gardens, River View Park, Tannery Park, and Centennial Trail. But over the course of the past few months, as the project has been developing, we have extended to other parks, and I'll go into a little bit more detail later in the presentation. Just as a little project team slide, on the right-hand side is my favorite picture of our field team with the biggest hemlock tree that we found in Glen Allen Park, which has a diameter of about 94 centimeter, and it's probably more than 100 years old. I don't know how to measure tree age, but it is a pretty old and a huge tree that exists there. In the project team, we've been working under the Director of Community Development and working with the GIS technician, who's been helping us a lot with the analytical and the surveying part of the project, while working under the recreation part of it with three staff members that we hired in the beginning of May. We had a project intern lead, which was hired in Clean Foundation 26-week green jobs internship program, who is still with us until November. We had another hemlock conservation project intern, who was also hired as an in-house 26-week term period, but jointly also working on the cemetery mapping at the same time. And we had another Duthaz University 14-week co-op term person who successfully finished their term and are back to school now. Getting into the different phases, where the tree inventory sits at currently, so as you can also see in the bottom right-hand corner, River View Park has been highlighted. So just to talk about it a little bit, like I mentioned, in the initial aim, when we were talking about the grant and the project, we did include River View Park as one of the places where we want to tree inventory and hopefully treat in the future. But as the project was developing, we did find out that River View Park is actually owned by the province, but the town has a permanent lease on the land for recreational use, et cetera. And River View Park is also one of the places where the province is actively doing biocontrol research regarding the hemlock conservation project. So they kindly requested us not to do any kind of tree inventory or any kind of pesticide treatment in that park for the time being, because in October of this year as well, they have plans to release more of Larry, like we spoke about before. And so that is one of the parks where we haven't done any tree inventory or any other things as of the moment, but some of your samples are collected from that park. So once we knew that we couldn't actually work on River View Park in the time being, we decided to introduce our tree inventory and the whole process to other parks. So other than Woodland Gardens, Glen Allen Park, Centennial Trail, and Tannery Park, we've extended it to the smaller parks also all throughout Bridgewater. And the majority being, you can see, we found 1,345 hemlock trees in Woodland Gardens, following through Glen Allen Park, 700, Centennial Trail, and the rest. And there were also some places where we didn't find any. So that's good, because we don't have to spend money on them. So the tree marking process has been going, like we spoke about back in January, when we actually started our tree inventory, somebody had torn down ribbons, which wasn't very good for us, because we had to scrape off that whole data and start off all over again. But this time, what we've been doing is, we've been tying the marking surveying tape first, and then using a small dot of biodegradable spray paint, which is going to wash off of the trees in five to seven years. And it's also upon consultation with people, has been, it's safe for the trees, and it doesn't affect the overall ecosystem existing in that area. Other than that, we've also been using small metal aluminum tags, which are just screwed on to the base of the tree, which carry the tree number and the kind of treatment it is going to get or has already gotten. And we've also been putting up increased signage, bigger ones on the entrances of parks, and smaller ones through the trails. So, and I'm happy to report, we haven't had any more trouble with anyone taking down ribbons, other than a couple squirrels, who go around sometimes, but we find the marking tape under the tree. So we've been doing good there. This is just a little snapshot of how our GIS survey looks like, and you can see the extent of the amount of trees we have. On the left side, we have Glen Allen Park, and the blue dots refer to trees that have to be treated or have already been treated with Imagerd, which is the injection pesticide. Those are the, all the trees that are within seven meters of a water course. All the red dots are the ones that are away from seven meters of a water course, and they have to be treated with the spray pesticide. And you can also see Woodland Gardens, it has majority of the trees with the blue pesticide, which is a bit more expensive, but that's what our trees need, so we get to that. Now, as you have the little samples in your hands, you can also see that now the ulia dulcat is actually much harder to identify, as the weather is getting colder. These samples are just from a week ago. Ulia dulcat is much easier to identify when it's more in the summer, because in their egg stages, they have more thicker of the egg woolly sacs around them. And as you can see in this picture, this is a picture that we actually clipped in River View Park back, I think, in June. So they were much bigger at the time, but now they're much smaller, and they're going into their adult stages, and they're going away and just traveling across all the trees, eating, killing them. But getting a little bit into what our tree inventory and our monitoring of the trees we found, the canopy density is a big indicator of our hemlock tree health. Our hemlock tree health is mostly, we have healthy trees, but there's some quantitative trees which have low canopy densities. They could be attributed to less sunlight getting into our thick forest, or they could be due to hemlock ulia dulcat, it is hard to tell. But the low canopy density is a big indicator of a greater chance of hemlock ulia dulcat infestation. Another big indicator is any new growth on the hemlock tree needles. And within our surveying, we have found that there are about 160 trees, which shows less or absolutely no new growth of new needles, which is a big indicator that they have been heavily infested by hemlock ulia dulcat. But also, ulia dulcat starts feeding on the trees from the up to the lower down. So by the time we can actually see them with our eyes, it is hard to identify, or the trees are already near death by then. Another one, the presence of hemlock ulia dulcat, like you have in your samples there, when we actually can't see them with the naked eye, we have about 367 trees of like, confirmed, we know that we have been able to see hemlock ulia dulcat, the other one to the middle. So some preliminary conclusions from our tree inventory and the monitoring of trees continuously. The current tree health sits at about 93% of these trees show new growth, which does indicate strong vitality. We did find five dead hemlock trees throughout Glen Allen Park, which could be, again, due to a variety of reasons, but it could also be due to hemlock ulia dulcat. And coincidentally, all of them are between that little patch of land in Glen Allen Park, where it's the main trail and the road. So all of those trees are situated there, which does make it, hemlock ulia dulcat to be able to travel easily to that specific part of land. So we do think that it is due to hemlock ulia dulcat. But again, it's unclear if we can definitely say that. The canopy density remains thick for most trees, it does suggest overall good health. Infestation status is 15%, definitely displays HWA infestation, and almost all the trees do display early signs of infestation through canopy density, presence of new growth, et cetera. So as an overall conclusion, we are in the earliest stages of this infestation, and it provides a very critical window for treatment, and early intervention will hopefully increase the survival chances and help us preserve the hemlock population of Bridgewater. Also through our treatment survey, we found that we have about 1,480 trees, which do require the spray pesticide treatment, and 1,043, which require the injection treatment, and these are without River View Park, which we if have to do in the future, that holds, I think, the majority of hemlocks that we found in our parks in the late. Pesticide treatment, where it sits at currently, Woodland Gardens, if you've heard, is ongoing. It's been going on through the month of September and early October. We have a total of 1,345 trees. We can't treat all of them this year because of the provincial limits on how much pesticide we can put into a hectare of land. Right now, that number actually sits at 600 of the ongoing treatment. We've already finished treating 600 trees in Woodland Gardens. Glen Allen Park, Pinecrest, Perry Neos, and Senior Citizens have already been finished. So these parks are completely inoculated, and they wouldn't need any more treatment for now. This is just a picture of our pesticide treatment. The one on the left-hand side is the injection treatment being given to a tree with a little...
Looks painful.
Yeah, we do have to drill into it, and then make a hole, and then inject it. And then the little dot of spray paint and the metal tag you can see on the base of the trees. And the right-hand side is our key member hunter doing pesticide spray treatment with all the gear, in a very hot weather. But it's worth it to say, actually. All throughout the project, we've also been involved in a lot of public engagement and outreach, especially when we had people tearing down our, whoever, tearing down animals, people, tearing down our surveying ribbons before. We haven't had any trouble yet, and I think a big part of that is when we had put out the social media posts that gained a lot of attention. And as Cara likes to say, was a blessing in disguise, because more people actually got to know about it, and what the work we were doing is. And we had a lot of questions, every day when we're out in the parks, we get a lot of questions. And we've continuously been talking to people, especially before the pesticide treatment. The field team actually goes door to door for all the residents that just bother the parks, so that they would know if their backyard opened up into the parks, that they would be aware that pesticide treatment is going on, the park was closed, and not to let their pets or their children run into the parks during that course of time. So we've had a lot of positive feedback coming from that, and people have, I think, been taking it over really well, and they're pretty happy that we are trying our best to save these trees. Other than that, we've been engaged in such flexible training sessions with Melbourne Economic Forest Co-op, Networking Connections, et cetera, et cetera, all of those things. And we do plan to have a boot at the farmers market also soon, and those are some nice pictures of our team members. That's all.
Any questions from council? Councillor Caldwell?
Couple of questions. One thing I've been asked is, there are, I think there are two color bands on the trees.
Yes.
What are, what do the colors indicate?
Yeah, definitely. So in the beginning, we were using yellow flagging tape and red flagging tape. The yellow was Fisitat, which is the spray pesticide, which is anywhere outside of seven meters of water. And the red was being used for anything that's within seven meters of a water course, or the injection pesticide. But when, when we had that tearing down of the ribbons, we actually changed the red to green, just so red would indicate more of like a danger and cutting down of trees, but we didn't want to refer to that. So if you see green or yellow, the green means it's going to be injected, and the yellow means it's going to be sprayed.
Makes sense. And the other question is, did I hear correctly that River View Park is one of the areas where they're testing a natural predator? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
They, they started it last year, and they let us know before the CBC interview came out, that they have released biocontrol all throughout the province. Actually, Keggi is one of the big places where they've tested all kinds of biocontrol, but here locally, River View Park is actually very heavily infested, as you can see in your samples. Some of those are, they are reducing right now, so they're hard to see. But your review part, even if you go there, pick any hemlock tree, you will see very heavy infestation. Hemlock ulia dulcat tends to have, it travels easily through water, so that's why any parks or any places that are near water have more of a chance of infestation.
Okay. So do we know from the province's testing if Larry, the little predator body is, is it doing its thing, it's working?
Yeah, well, didn't, didn't tell.
Didn't tell, okay.
Hopefully, hopefully they can tell us soon. But we did actually attend an event back in August, or the whole team, we attended, we attended an event in Liverpool, which was, it was like an HWA update event for all of North America. So there were research scientists from New York and all the east coast of America, where HWA has been existing since the past 50, 60 years, and they had been sharing their experience with controlling this bug and mistakes. They made mistakes they hope we don't make, and the province was also there, and they were speaking about their biocontrol research. And there's only so much they tell us, yeah.
It'd be nice to know if just if it's working.
Yeah.
Especially where you said it has probably the most hemlocks in our community.
Yes, it has a lot of hemlocks.
I know it's their park, but it's, you know, kind of a mutual responsibility with that. Any other questions from council on that? Okay, I know there's some requests coming up for kind of a joint conservation project? Are you presenting that as well?
Yeah, if we're ready, I can move it.
We're ready, yeah.
Perfect, it's right there. So when we actually started our project in the beginning, and once the public started to get to know more about what the hemlock ulia dulcat is, how deadly it is for our trees, I guess the public in general started pushing the council of MODL, the Municipal Executive District of Londonburg, to ask them what they would do. District of Lunenburg, to ask them what they were doing about their hemlock trees and to save them. And they were able to budget some money to work on or to start their own project, their own, start their own treatment of hemlock woolly adulcat infestation throughout MODO, which is big. And they reached out to us to ask, because we had already been, we had set up a project, we were already in the process of starting our tree inventory and different things. So when they had reached out to us, firstly, they needed to know if they actually have hemlock woolly adulcat in their parks. So me and my team, we went out to River Ridge Commons with MODL one day and tried to help them to actually identify hemlock woolly adulcat, try to actually visibly see hemlock woolly adulcat. And we were able to identify it at River Ridge Commons. That is where the conversation started to begin. And they explained their interest in hopefully having a, not a joint project, but hopefully our staff having, so that they can help them do their own inventory pesticide treatment and carry on their project or basically start their project. Because we, our staff spent a lot of time studying for the exams and getting their pesticide applicator certificates and doing the whole tree inventory training and everything and how to actually identify woolly adulcat. So where that conversation is sitting at the moment is that they are hoping that throughout the months of winter this year, we are able to help them build a tree inventory to try to find hemlock woolly adulcat and hopefully be able to treat it next spring. And that is why we are bringing this request to council today. And they are taking it to their council tomorrow, because I think they have their council meeting tomorrow. So, yeah, that is where our recommendation and the report you have in front of you is for a decision that we are recommending that council direct our hemlock conservation project staff team to explore the possibility of entering into a service agreement with them to provide hemlock conservation services. The hemlock conservation services, what it would actually mean would be divided roughly into human resources, material costs and administrative costs. Human resources would be our project team with a certain percentage of their time to manage MODL's project, which would mean, for example, the field teams being 100% of their time during the winter months, being situated in their parks. But some part of our staff time, like GIS time, project coordinator time, et cetera, to be able to give some percentage of their time as resources to them. Material cost would be anything that they use completely. So we would be to no cost of ourselves, but like absorbent pads that will be used in the future for pesticide treatment, flagging tape, caution tape, et cetera, all of those things. And these are variable cost and they depend on how much we actually use them. Administrative cost, on the other hand, would be 49%, which I think is similar to the service agreement that we currently have for the fire inspector at town hall. And we went on the same cost basis, but they would include anywhere in tariff equipment. We currently have all the pesticide equipment, all of the GPS equipment, surveying GIS equipment, et cetera. The implications that they would have on our financial or budget, the shared services increment would be fully cost recovered. It would allow for the extension of contracts that we have for our field team right now and the retention of existing staff expertise, which would ensure a seamless transition into the second year of Town and Bridge Water's HWA project, so that we can start treatments as early as spring, we can start as early as April. Legal, the shared services agreement would operate with a fee for service contract, which can be carefully drafted if we were to go forward with this agreement. And the strategic priorities and hemlock conservation project is a priority of council currently. So the following options that you have with your council reports right now is you could approve the hemlock conservation project staff to explore the possibility of entering into the service agreement. You could direct us to return with additional information before proceeding, or you could deny our request. That's all.
Any questions from council on what is being asked by Council Conklin?
Yes.
Do we have the capacity?
We, we do with the team we have in place right now and actually help us keep that team for spring, for our own spring work.
So pesticide treatment can only be done within as early as March or April until October end. And the team we have right now, we have trained them in pesticide applicator certificate, which took the exam, got a certification for five years, and they are able to start treatment as early as next March. But this agreement would help us do treatment or in MODO's park for the winter, so they have their data to go off of and them to keep continuing with us in the spring.
Okay, thanks. I'm actually shocked to learn that MODO doesn't have a project like this underway already. I mean, it's kind of concerning. And if we were not to do this shared service, then you would lose some of your team or just for the winter or?
It depends if they would want to come back. Their contracts are until November, mid of November right now. So it depends if they would want to come back in April, May, or if we want to hire a completely new team next year.
But we don't have any, because they can't apply the pesticides in the winter and they've already done the tree inventory for us. There's nothing they can do in town in the off-season, whereas this would give them the work, yeah.
So all of that cemetery mapping is done, has been completed?
That would be...
Yeah, only one of the person, just one of the person is working on the cemetery mapping and they hope to do that jointly, so they can be working on that as well as this, whereas the other staff member can be completely working.
I would point out that we are actually probably ahead of most municipalities that are dealing with, with the hemlock woolly adulcat. So it's not surprising that they're where they are.
Even the province told us that we are the first municipality who is doing independently our own projects. We have Kentville who has hired an external person to do everything. We also have Mahon Bay who actually hired a private organization to do it, but they actually just asked us how we set up our own project, because it's very expensive for them to have a private organization do everything. And Chester and MODL, everyone's interested in learning more about it.
To your point, this is hugely concerning, because if you have, if municipalities fall behind, when this, you know, infestation happens and wipes out forests, those trees die and as we know, they burn. And, you know, it's, it's one thing for an urban center with, you know, we're pretty compact, but when you're looking at large municipalities with huge swaths of hemlock forest, it has the potential of making the fires in Shelbourne look very, very tiny. So I would, maybe I'll reach out to the NSFM and perhaps they should be letting the municipal members across the province know that, you know, there's, there's resources out there, but they have to be doing this. We have a shared responsibility to make sure that we don't, you know, just leave this to, to someone else to take care of.
Yeah, and the woolly adulcat has reached as far as HRM and TRU, and they're also looking into options, but they don't have anything in the works right now. But Lunenburg is falling behind on infestation.
Okay. What is the will of council on this one? Council Caldwell?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater, direct staff of the hemlock conservation project to explore the possibility of entering into a service agreement with the municipality of the District of Lunenburg to provide hemlock conservation services with a draft agreement to be brought back to council for approval.
Thank you. Second in line, Council McDonald. Thank you for the discussion.
Question.
Hearing that question, you call all those in favor? Those pose, commotion scary. Thank you.
Should I take this out of this pack?
Oh, yeah, I don't want, I don't want them eating the desk.
If they open, then where is it?
Yeah, great. Thank you. We're down to 7.3, which is, we have a couple of things we're going to talk about in the C8 commercial zone. I'm assuming that's why there's a whole bunch of people in the gallery today, so take it away.
Council, I hope you're all well. This application is to make amendments to special commercial C8 zone. It's a staff-led application, meaning there's no specific development currently proposed on the property. These proposed amendments were part of a two-part process focused on the special commercial C8 zone. Part two of this process was brought to council on July 8th and August 12th respectively for first and second consideration. The result was a motion from council to maintain six properties within the special commercial zone while rezoning the remaining eight properties which have ceased their, discontinued their commercial uses. As part of, as part of the discussion on August 12th, text amendment was discussed for the property of 76 Dominion to permit the change of use from an automobile sales and repair shop to a household repair service. This is a context map of the property of 76 Dominion, located on Dominion Street and bordered by York and Churchill, there you can see. The property of 76 Dominion was used until recently as an automobile parts, sales and service center. However, the property has recently been sold. The, the use of the automobile parts, sales and service would be permitted to continue as a legal non-conforming use should the use be reinstated within one year. The new property owner has expressed a desire to stay in the C8 zone with the intention of changing the permitted use to a household repair service. And a change of use could be achieved in one of, or one of two ways. Ultimately, there's three options for council to consider to move forward with the property of 76 Dominion. Option one is to complete MPS and LUB amendments, text amendments to policy C55 and table T respectively, to change the site-specific permitted commercial use. Option two is to retain the C8 zone, thereby necessitating a development agreement for a commercial change of use. And option three is to rezone the property to high-density residential. Option one, to complete the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments, would entail a first reading of the proposed amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to change the specific permitted use for the property of 76 Dominion from the automobile parts, sales and service to the household repair service as the sole as-of-right commercial use permitted on the property. This option would maintain the special, oh, sorry. This option would ultimately be in opposition to policy C55, which permits developments in existence before the date of the 2014 municipal planning strategy and listed in the land use bylaw under table T. Therefore, the policy would also need to be amended. Further, it would be against the intention of policy C56, which would necessitate the development agreement for the change of use to another commercial use within the C8 Ultimately, this option would take, it would expedite the process to change that permitted commercial use, taking approximately two to three months for the whole process. Given the change in direction of the proposed amendments since the first consideration, staff's recommendation that should council go through with this option, a public participation meeting should be held. For option two, to retain the C8 zone, council would not conduct a first reading and would ultimately maintain the property as is. This would require a development agreement to follow through with the desired change of use. And ultimately, this process would take five to seven months to go through the development agreement process. Ultimately, that would be supported by the intention of the C8 zone and policy C56. Finally, option three would to maintain staff's initial recommendation to rezone, from the July 8th meeting and to rezone to the high-density residential R6 zone. But ultimately, this option would not permit the property owner's desire to change the use to the household service repair. There would be some impacts of note for the proposed options. If council were to follow through with the MPS and LEB amendments in option one, this would also enable other property owners within the C8 zone to apply for a text amendment to change the use within their C8 zone instead of going through a development agreement, which is currently required. Option two would have no impacts as the zone would stay as it is currently zoned, that's the C8 zone. And option three, if rezone to the high-density residential R6 zone, existing uses could remain without being the automotive parts and sales and service. And the buildings could remain, future uses would need to subscribe to the permissions of the R6 zone and future buildings would also need to adhere to those standards. Ultimately, there are three options. Option one, council conducts first reading of the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw text amendments to change the specific use in table T from automobile parts, sales and service to household repair services for the property of 76 Dominion and schedule a public hearing for the subject property during the regular scheduled meeting at October 15th. Two, council does not conduct first reading, thereby maintaining the special commercial C8 zone for the property of 76 Dominion. And three, council conducts first reading of the MPS and LEB amendments to redesign and rezone the property to high-density residential. It's staff's recommendation that council does not recommend, excuse me, does not conduct first reading, thereby maintaining the special commercial zone for the property at 76 Dominion. And for clarification, there would be no proposed amendments to be made for that recommendation. It's very sweet compared to the other ones.
Well presented, thank you. Yeah.
So just to be clear, the council did give direction that we make the amendments and include maters as an existing use, so the amendments have been drafted in that way.
They are found in the package in the report.
So they're option one, appendix A and B. And certainly Connor's presenting to council some other options for consideration, given that the amendments were kind of done on the fly. So staff have obviously considered the amendments and the recommendation is a little different, but council, it's council's choice which amendments you choose.
Any questions of, of staff? Well, Council Caldwell?
I just need to be clear on this. I know you just said this, but I just need to be clear. The, the existing current use for maters will be permitted going forward and then we'd still go through this process to formalize it? Is that correct?
So the, the amendments would be, the amendments that council asked for were to update the list of existing permitted uses in the C8 zone, to change it from the automotive sound thing, yeah.
To household repair.
To maters. And so that if you do first reading on those amendments, then second reading, that would basically legitimize that use of the maters, refrigeration and repair that appeared just recently there. So that was a property that kind of got caught a little bit between the amendments.
Council Conklin?
So just further to Councilor Caldwell's question. So if, if we wanted to look at allowing maters to conduct their business on that lot, we would look at?
Option one.
Option one, okay, thanks.
Other questions? I do appreciate that there's a number of options and it can be confusing publicly at the documents we're looking at. But that's, that's the beauty of, you know, staff have recommendations and council doesn't always have to take one of those. But that's, that's, that's the beauty of the relationship we have with staff. That's how it's supposed to be. Yes, Council Conklin?
Just wondering, could we understand why staff are recommending option two?
Yeah, so just to go back to option one, I guess, there was a policy in place, C55, which necessitated a development agreement for any change of use within the C8 zone. And policies C56 and CDA5 both play into that development agreement, setting out criteria for such. And so... setting out criteria for such. And so ultimately, that amendment would allow any property in the C eight zone existing at this time to change their use to any of, well, to go through the same process to complete a text amendment as opposed to a development agreement as it currently stands in the zone.
It would still have to come back to council for approval and have a public hearing, but a development agreement is a little bit more consultative in its process.
Gotcha.
But it doesn't mean it can just change.
No, no, council has to approve that, and you have to have a public hearing and public notice.
Ultimately, it would be a LEB text amendment in the future, whereas currently it's an MPS and LEB text amendment.
Other questions from council? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Doran, thank you.
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater want to give first reading to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw as shown in Appendix A and B, option one of document twenty-four dash zero zero eight F.
Thank you. Seconded by Council McDonald. Further discussion or any further questions of staff? I want to make sure everyone understands. Option one is coming back on October 15th. We're going to be piling a lot of stuff on this council's last council meeting.
It's going to be a lot.
It's going to be a long one. Because I'm going to miss you all. Further questions? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And now we are down to amendments, part two.
All right, get back into it. This evening is first consideration of the proposed amendments for the special commercial zone relating to the other thirteen properties within the I'll start off with the recommendation. It is recommended that council retains those five properties with existing commercial uses within the special commercial zone and rezones the remaining properties which have discontinued their commercial uses. On August 12th, a public hearing took place where residents with properties with existing commercial uses spoke out against the proposed rezoning of the special commercial zone. Following the public hearing, council made a motion to maintain those six properties within the, with commercial uses within that zone. Tonight's staff are bringing back the application to consider the rezoning of eight properties with solely residential uses with the intention of retaining the C eight zone for those existing commercial uses. Further discussion, I guess that piece doesn't matter, we just went through Within the special commercial zone, there are eight properties which have discontinued their commercial uses and now have solely residential uses, and six properties containing or existing or wishing to contain existing commercial uses. So one property would require concurrent amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw, that being two fifty-five Victoria Road, formerly host to wood product sales. The remaining seven properties will be subject to solely a land use bylaw amendments, and they would be rezoned in accordance with the future land use map as per the intention of the C eight zone. The existing commercial uses are listed here, and should council retain these properties in the C eight zone, no changes would be made to those properties. Ultimately, the impact of the proposed rezonings would result in the existing uses and buildings on the properties would be able to remain. Future uses would need to subscribe to the zone permissions of said zone, either the R two or the R three zone, and ultimately, future buildings would have to adhere to those zone standards as well. So the recommendation is recommended that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration of the proposed map and text amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw in Appendix C. Schedule a public hearing for October 15th, 2024, and revisit the remaining special commercial C eight zones as part of the plan review process.
Thank you. Questions? So just kind of like we discussed the last meeting, we're breaking out the ones that wanted the change from those who didn't want the change, and changing the ones that wanted and not changing the ones that didn't want. Any questions on that? A little clearer? Want the motion, please? Yes, sir.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater want to give first reading to the proposed map and text amendments to municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw, MPS slash LUB as shown in Appendix B, C, and D of the document twenty-four dash zero zero eight G, and schedule a public hearing for October 15th, 2024.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Tanner. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Down to seven point five, Community Energy Investment Plan update. And look at that timing. That's perfect. Right to the podium.
That's me close.
We waited till we could hear you, and then we were like, okay, we'll vote.
All right. Should I start?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm bringing you an update on the Energize Bridgewater program and specifically the planning work that the town does to make sure that the town stays in line with the requirements for finding our way toward a low-carbon future. So there are two recommendations in your agenda package today. There's some supporting information. I'm going to focus my talk just on a couple of key points to help you consider those items there. But where this work is going is the setting of targets for emissions reductions is a necessary component of updating our climate planning work. And so that's something that's on our work plan for this year. Council has the ability to establish some of those key targets that will work into the plan. So the background is that in 2018, council approved an emissions reduction plan for the town, townwide emissions. As you can see, there's a number of different ways that the community's overall emissions were going to be reduced over about a thirty-year period. This was one of the most ambitious plans that any municipality had produced in 2018. Now, that's a really key point because times have changed. So whereas in 2018, the climate science at the time was telling us that it was a very reasonable and ambitious thing for the town to produce a climate plan with an eighty or so percent reduction in emissions, that's no longer keeping pace with the climate science. We've consistently found ourselves on the local level, provincial, national, international level behind where the climate science is saying that we as a society need to be going. And so what a lot of municipalities are doing who produce climate plans in, you know, the 2010s, in the early 2020s, is we're going back and we're updating those, and we're saying, gosh, we really have to do more as a society. How can we do that? And so the current practice is to use science-based targets, which connect to the current best science that's available in reducing the impacts of global climate change by basically achieving net zero by 2050 and by dramatically reducing emissions well before that time. There are a number of considerations for Canada, as our society is generally considered an affluent society in the global context. It may not feel like that here on a day-to-day basis, but on a global context, the thinking is that Canada can do a little bit more. And so what I'm trying to, what I'm conveying to you with this graph here is just that this question of, well, why can't we just reduce our emissions, you know, by a little bit, and then we'll figure it out down the road? Why don't we let, you know, future council make more ambitious targets? The simple reality is that the longer we wait to do anything about climate change, the more emissions there are going to be, and the more work needs to happen in a shorter and shorter timeframe. So the current practice is to drive those early emissions reductions, achieving a early action curve, and get those emissions down over time. The good news is that we've recalculated Bridgewater's emissions as of 2021, and there's been a decline. There has been a combination of actions that have happened at the municipal level, the federal level, and the provincial level that have actually resulted in about a twenty percent reduction in emissions since the last time we did an inventory of the town's emissions. That was in 2011. We had approximately 300,000 tons of emissions as a community. We, by 2021, we were down to 235,000 tons, and that's not just COVID. There's a lot more that happened in those intervening years. It also is important to look at where that placed things in respect to the community, sorry, the CEIP, the Community Energy Investment Plan that council approved in 2018. And as you can see, those three dots there are actually still generally above where we as a town, we as a community wanted to be by 2021, and those emissions are hard to get. It's challenging work. It takes multiple jurisdictions working together, and really what we're being asked to do now is to do basically even more and set more ambitious targets. So the nice thing about having the inventory done that was completed just weeks ago is that we have a better line of sight on how our industry is working extremely hard to reduce its emissions, our residential sector, our commercial sector, and so on, and that is driving in the right direction and gives us a basis from which to take further action. So the recommendation this evening is for council to set, to formalize its 2050 target. Council has already joined the city's Race to Zero program. That happened in 2022, if I'm not mistaken. And that really made, you know, a strong promise to work aggressively on climate issues. So tonight's opportunities for council to formalize that 2050 target of basically being a net zero community by 2050, and then to adopt a science-based 2030 target as well. Staff's recommendation is to pursue 103.5 kilotons as representing an appropriate science-based target for the community. It's extremely aggressive. It's not far in the future, but one of the most important things that this council can do by picking that target is to signal to other levels of government, other community players, industry, other organizations, that the town is committed to basically following the best possible science with regard to climate change and to doing something about it. There are a few next steps in the plan. Basically, what we would do is we would take council's decision, bring it into a proper plan format, an update to the CEIP, bring it back to you for consideration, although that wouldn't be until the next council.
Council Callow?
What are the financial implications of this up to 2030?
The financial implications are, so the thing with setting targets is that the targets are not legally binding in any way. Council retains complete decision-making power over your annual budget, over your programs that you support. Your main program that's working on these issues right now is Energize Bridgewater. Energize Bridgewater has been funded by other levels of government. In 2025, we're going to have to have a conversation about what happens next because that'll approach the end of the funding period. But essentially, it retains in council's, it stays in council's control how much the town invests in its climate activities. What, on the flip side, one of the things that may be possible is that by setting an aggressive climate target, it may motivate other players to work with the town on some more ambitious projects. So there's the other side of the equation, too, which is that it may enable opportunities for the town to acquire some funding to do other projects.
There's a case to be made, too, to other orders of government in terms of the health implications of less emissions in the atmosphere and the savings to other orders of government's budgets by having cleaner air. So when we do our part, I think there's, you know, there is only one taxpayer, right? So there's some savings there. We also know that there's some large corporations in Bridgewater that also have to meet targets set by their head office, and they can't do that if the community they're in isn't also working towards that same goal. So this is kind of, to Leon's point, we all may lead others to work with us, but at the end of the day, it's a great question because we might not be able to do everything because our budget is limited. So every year, we'll have to make that decision.
We also, we also just recently at a council meeting not too long ago, approved a power purchase agreement that would see us buy renewable energy, right? So there's things that we're doing that might not cost us as much to operate that can help us meet those targets as well. And then Jessica just reminded me that it's part of our investment in our community to assist them in helping us meet our targets. We have our PACE program and things like that that are in play right now.
Great. Good question, though. Other questions? Council McDonald?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater set science-based greenhouse gas emissions targets for Bridgewater of 103.5 kilotons E CO2 by 2030 and zero kilotons by 2050. And further, that Town Council direct staff to produce an update to the Community Energy Investment Plan in line with these targets.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Callow. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we are down, just kind of like sweeping in and sweeping out. Down to staff reports and recommendations. We have a recommendation from the Audit Committee for approval of financial statements to March 31st. So we'll welcome our Director of Finance to run through some of those.
Good evening. Earlier this evening, our Audit Committee met and reviewed the financial statements in detail, the 2324 financial statements. The Audit Committee consists of the mayor, council, and one member of the public. Our auditors were also in attendance at that meeting to communicate any findings they had from the audit, as well as present the draft audit reports on the financial statements. They also went through their internal control findings as well. The town's financial statements consist of a number of different reports, which are the consolidated financial statements, the nonconsolidated financial statements, the trust funds, as well as a Smart Cities Challenge report, project report, sorry. So there's quite a few separate reports there. The key thing that was presented would be the consolidated financial statements. And so just to remind council and members of the public that consolidated financial statements include all the funds of the town, the capital fund, the operating fund, all the reserves, as well as any entities that we are involved with, such as our proportionate share of the LCLC, Municipal Joint Services Board, and the PSC. So there's quite a bit in those consolidated financial statements. Again, council or the Audit Committee earlier this evening reviewed all of the financial statements in detail. So we'll just go through just a couple of highlights of the consolidated statements. So in the consolidated statements, there's total financial assets of $49 million. There's non-financial assets of $90.5 million, and liabilities of $29 million. And for the year, the consolidated annual surplus was $4.7 million. So that's really the highlights of those pages. And so that's really the key things in those statements. If council has any questions about any specific pages, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions? No? Okay. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Tanner, thank you.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approved the audited consolidated financial statements, the unaudited, audited, nonconsolidated financial statements, the audited trust funds of the town of Bridgewater, and the nonconsolidated financial statements for the Smart Cities Challenge Project for the year ended March 1st, 2024, as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Callow. Seconded by Counsel Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. 10.2 is our discussion session notes for August 6th. So at that time, we had a presentation from both our Economic Development, Economic Development Officer and as well as Kieran Hunt from FBM about the retail and accommodation gap analysis. And then we also talked about traffic calming measures. So that'll be, there was some direction to, or there will be some direction to send that to staff to look at next year's budget for some inclusion of those. And just a reminder to the public that all the documents that we have are all available on the town's website under the Council tab. So you can go to Agenda, and everything we have here is available for the public as well. Down to 10.3, which is request for land for expansion of nonprofit childcare facility.
So, yes, staff are recommending that Town Council provide land at less than market value to Small World Learning Center for an expansion of their services of approximately 90 spaces and direct staff to work with Small World to find a suitable location, subject to servicing being available at a reasonable cost. So Small World is seeking their licensed early learning center, nonprofit, and they're actually a registered charity. They've been operating in Bridgewater for 45 years, and they are seeking to expand their facility. They currently have 90 children in their facility and a waitlist of 176. And through the work of the federal government and through its agreement, bilateral agreement with the provinces, the federal government is trying to reach $10 a day average cost of daycare. And in January 2024, the province released its action plan to make that happen. So Small World is looking to expand, and they requested land from the town to support them in doing that. So there's options to work, direct staff to work with Small World to find land, suitable location. It would come back to council for final approval, but this is to both provide support to Small World and to direct staff to undertake that work because it's not in our current work plans. And you could also, of course, deny the request or defer for further information.
Questions or discussion?
Just one, I guess, the language, "subject to servicing being available at a reasonable cost to the project." What specifically is meant by that, I guess?
Well, in looking at some of our land, we don't have services at all. So if it requires to build 100-foot of road with trunk, sewer, and water, that's not a reasonable cost to the project and would make it really financially unfeasible for both Small World and the town.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, who would be determined in the reason, the reasonable sense of that? Council?
I think a council would have a decision to make at that time, once we know what the servicing costs are, whether or not that's something that council is prepared to entertain or it's on the applicant to cover those costs. So I, one of you will decide that.
Perfect. Counsel Conklin.
Do we have any idea from the applicant what they might be prepared to pay for servicing costs?
They are looking for serviced land, so, you know, ultimately, they would like as little as possible. They're trying to expand their nonprofit.
But their funding that they receive does include, doesn't include the ability?
I'm unaware.
Yeah, I was under the impression that it did include, like, some servicing costs, like, it's total project costs.
The more they pay for servicing, the less we go to the other components.
Right, yeah. But I don't think it's like some of our agreements where it's, we'll give you this to build this, but you can't include it in any of the periphery stuff. That's, that was my understanding from our meeting.
Counsel Caldwell.
Would it be reasonable for the applicant to know upfront whether or not council is willing to pay any or how much of the servicing cost toward this? Or is this, is too early for that?
I would suggest it's probably a bit too early unless council's like, we're not covering any of the servicing costs, prepared to look at the land piece but not the services. They've got to, they're making, this is for an application, it's a middle at this point. We haven't nailed down an exact location of where those two acres would be. So it's really hard for us to say what that, that cost would be. Obviously, we're going to try to find spots where infrastructure costs are low, where they potentially are already serviced. Can't answer that. So unless you know right now it's zero, then we can certainly communicate that to them and state that we're focused on the two acres. The rest is up to you.
I had thought that when we had discussed this, it was for the parcel of land only, and that did not include any servicing. And part of it is that that certainly does then set a precedent. We have a lot of not-for-profits, and in the past, we have been asked for land, which is, which is great. But, you know, road and infrastructure can, can in some cases be millions. And I, I think, to me, I would separate the two, the donation of land, and then if there's a future ask for the servicing costs, I would deal with that as a standalone to not jeopardize their funding or their, this application going forward. Because I think it's the land, they really have to secure the land. But I, for me, if it's contingent on also us providing road and water and sewer at the taxpayer's expense, I don't, because that could be, minimum, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
If I could, I think that, you know, on their ask, they are unaware of where, which parcels of town land would have services which are not. So, you know, it's very reasonable that their request initially comes in assuming that our land is serviced. So, you know, however council wishes to move that. Most people think that, you know, if they, the land already would have water, that they would be putting in the laterals and those services to connect. But that the land that we might give or that we have available would already have those services, so. Just saying that that's, that's part of the conversation that we had. They assumed, they, you know, knowing that they'd have to build a road or put in trunk, sewer, and water was beyond their.
So you could change the latter part of the recommendation to say, "subject to servicing being available." You know, so it makes it clear it's land that you're dealing with and makes it clear that they're looking for a serviced land.
Right.
Couldn't you just end it at work with Small World Learning Center to find a suitable location?
Either way.
I would just end it there. Yeah. Because they, they may have, the funding may be fine, the servicing may be, I would just ruin the servicing. The original request was for the land, and if there's a future request for servicing, I would keep that.
We'll just make it clear that it's for land.
Counsel Caldwell.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'd agree. I just don't want there to be miscommunication with them. Like, we will support them with looking at some land, but I don't want to make, I don't want to have them be under the assumption that we're offering more than we actually are upfront, right?
Yep. And I think being clear, it also doesn't mean, like, council can make a decision down the road, so it's not saying $0 for servicing, it's saying just, that's separate, we'll have that, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But I think keeping the land separate, if that makes sense, whatever council wishes to do. Someone's prepared to make a motion? Counsel Tanner?
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater provide land at less than market value to Small World Learning Center for an expansion of their services of approximately 90 spaces, and let staff be directed to work with Small World Learning Center to find a suitable location.
Seconded by Counsel Thorburn. Further discussion? Question? Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. You said 176 on the waiting list for spaces, so obviously desperately in need of childcare. So we'll convey that council's decision right away. Down to Empire Street Water Main upgrades.
Good evening, council. Empire Street, we know the water main is undersized and full of tuberculosis right now. So the PSC has, has put forward a project to renew their water main. As part of that, council directed staff to look at provisionally covering the cost of repaving the whole street, and that tender has since closed. It was tendered as Phase 1, which was from York Street to Hillcrest Street, following year fiscal '25-'26, another $225,000. With the tender closing, with, when we submitted the tender, we included the provisional item for Phase 2 as well, and we've received one bid. It closed, and it came in at a combined 75% of the combined Phase 1 and Phase 2. So we're recommending that we award the tender to the sole bidder, Dexter Construction, for approximately $338,000. Again, that would be what we anticipate to be 75% of the expected budget. And because it's under budget and the work won't actually be planned to start until spring 2025, we're hoping that you will direct staff to investigate the cost to renew the clay sanitary sewer in Empire Street as well, along Empire, yeah, and report back to council as the current infrastructure is nearing the end of its serviceable life.
Okay. Questions? Counsel Thorburn.
Not a question, but a comment. And I like your idea, because if we're going in and doing all that work, it only makes sense that we do the sewer at the same time. Because, you know, I know we're guaranteed and we're just going to pay part of it to Hillcrest Street, but I like, like the plan, the recommendation you brought, and fully support it, but I'm hoping that council will see it fit that we do the sewer at the same time so that we only go through this process once. I think we went through it three times on York Street when it first got on council.
Oh, Dominion.
Dominion Street, rather. And I hope we never see it again because it cost about three times as much as it should have cost. And we have an opportunity here to do the job at one time and probably save considerable amount of money for our taxpayers. So I certainly won't be on council at the time, but I would support that motion.
My question is, well, maybe the obvious question, when is the road being looked at? Paving?
Paving would be, so.
Everything's the spring?
Everything would be the spring, yes. Yeah. Be replaced in the water main and then the final street recap.
So it's not, they're not going to go winter with, like, the, just the sand or whatever, not removing?
No, yeah, yeah, yeah. It would be spring 2025, finishing December 15th-ish, 2025.
Okay.
All planned to be completed next year, yeah.
Okay. We're going to have a lot of roadwork next year. A lot. Okay. I think we'll have a new exit off the highway.
Yes, right.
Any other, any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? I know Counsel Thorburn, you want to make this?
I want to make this one. Oh, not really. But anyway, I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater award tender number 24-04E, Empire Street, York Street to High Street, water main upgrades for the town's portion of the Dexter Construction Company, limit it for approximately $337,988 HST, $372,703 for HST. And by doing so, gives pre-budget approval for the same for fiscal year 2025-2026, and direct staff to investigate the cost to renew the clay sanitary sewer along Empire Street and report back to council as the current infrastructure is nearing the end of its serviceable life.
Seconded by Counsel Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next one is conveyance of public street, Roundhouse Drive, Phase 2 portion.
Good evening, mayor and council. Staff are recommending the takeover of the Phase 2 portion of Roundhouse Drive, making it a public street to its intersection with Glen Allen Drive. If declared a public street, together with the creation of the street parcel and de-transfer and receipt of a 12-month warranty bond, property owner would be able to create lots and build homes. The subject portion of Roundhouse Drive will allow the further development of the Osprey Sound subdivision, including up to nine new single-unit dwellings. The Phase 2 portion of Glen, of Roundhouse Drive is complete. All the submission requirements for takeover have been received and are currently under review. While the review isn't complete yet, the recommendation in front of council includes a condition that will ensure the town engineer is satisfied with the, with the takeover package submission prior to transferring the deed, which would officially make Roundhouse Drive a public street vested in the town. And I'll take any questions that council may have.
Questions from council on this? No? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Caldwell.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater accept the deed for the proposed public street, being a portion of Roundhouse Drive representing Phase 2 of the Osprey Sound Concept subdivision development, and declare by motion the acceptance of said public street, conditional on the approval of the takeover package by the town engineer.
Seconded by Counsel McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is recommendation of the police commission for appointment of a citizen rep. And that recommendation is for Palma shampoo. Someone prepared to make that motion? Counsel Conklin?
Excuse me. There we are. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Palma shampoo to the Bridgewater Police Commission for a three-year term beginning on October 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Frasier. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 10.7 is our building inspection report for August. Busy. I think I said that. Every building inspection report, so things keep moving along. Again, if the public has any questions or if council has any questions, you can contact the appropriate staff for those. It's probably a good time to kind of highlight the town of Bridgewater app, too. So there's a lot of information in the app. Road construction, so we're just, you know, talking about construction on Empire Street in a busy construction year next year. So there's a tab for road construction, the transit map is on there. There's also the Worker B app, the tab that I know lots of people use. So if you see something that you feel staff, needs to be reported to staff, you can just fill that out, and then it is directed to the appropriate staff person to action. So I know that's getting some good use and good feedback. So encourage people to download the town's app. Down to 10.8, it's the National Shine the Light on Domestic Violence Campaign. And so the town has been asked in terms of lighting Town Hall, which, if you've seen the Tower Town Hall, we can change the color of those lights to light it purple during the month of November for that National Shine Light on Domestic Violence Campaign. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Counsel McDonald, thank you.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater please request from the transition House Association of Disposal and Drop Staff to program the Town Hall tower light to shine purple during November as a gesture of support for the National Shine the Light on Domestic Violence Campaign. And that staff be given discussion to repeat this action again should the state request the support from fans be received in future years.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Conklin. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Amendment to the Lunenburg County Anti-Racism and Diversity Intermunicipal Agreement.
Good evening, Your Worship, council. This is an extension of the current employment date for the anti-racism coordinator who left us about four months ago. So the original position was disposed to start funding in April of this year and go for two years. So we've had a six-month absence, so that funding hasn't been used. So this motion is to request an extension from this council for six more months to September 30th, 2026, and that will align with the other five municipalities.
Any questions on that? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Caldwell, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the adjusted end date of the Lunenburg County Anti-Racism and Diversity Intermunicipal Regional Agreement to September 30th, 2026.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Frasier. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. I feel like we should just skip this wastewater disposal treatment one, just for another day. So we have wastewater disposal and treatment options. Turn it over to the CEO.
The council has a report in their, in their, in their agenda package to accompany this. And the town has a really aggressive wastewater improvement plan. It's to address some recent challenges that we have respecting capacity. We have advised council in the past that there are areas within the town system that do not have capacity for additional connections, and there's concern that that exists both, well, it exists during wet weather with combined storm and sanitary, but also during dry weather as well. So your aggressive capital plan, we've just announced some recent funding for that. That's to look at our inflow infiltration initiatives and how we can remove storm from our, from our system. That includes separation projects of separating storm and sanitary. That includes separation projects of separating storm and sanitary, but also looking at initiatives such as improving manhole covers, pump station upgrades, those types of things. But it's a ten-year plan, and it's seventy million dollars in cost. We also have plans that were in place that we know of some sanitary pipes, which are full during dry weather, which we are looking at a plan for replacement of, and we're presently doing some, or about to do some flow monitoring and a complete assessment of the entire system to ensure that we have a really good handle on what our capacity is within our, within our pipes. But as I said, it's several years, ten to fifteen for the entire thing, and in the meantime, we have lots of development pressure, and there's a need to continue to accommodate growth. So, knowing all that, council asks staff to look at some options to accommodate growth during this period, and that would be alternatives to our existing wastewater system that we have. So, we have a wastewater collection and treatment system, and normally towns, to ensure the long-term sustainability of those systems, from a financial perspective, in order to be able to fund upgrades, you, you establish a sewer rate, and, and that sewer rate, as we, we are, is moving towards a full cost recovery, and it ensures that we can fund operating and capital. It ensures efficient use of sewer services, so normally we require connections for that reason. If you didn't, you'd have the option up to the landowner about, do I want to put in an onsite sewage disposal system, or do I want to connect to the, to the town system? And if all towns allowed either or, your sewer systems would be unsustainable from a financial perspective, because there are a lot of fixed costs that go into sewer systems. So, for that reason, normally you would require connections. But in this case, knowing that our system is at capacity and we have growth pressures, it's kind of forced us to look at other options. So, the one option that council asked to be looked at is onsite sewage disposal systems. So, onsite sewage disposal systems are regulated by the province and Nova Scotia Department of Environment, so they have an act and they have regulations, so you can't just put these in on a whim. They, you have to design them, they have to be approved. The installation has to be overseen and signed off on, so there are, there are standards in place to ensure that it is an approved system, that the installation has been approved, and there's a requirements for ongoing maintenance. There's requirements for setbacks from property lines, from water courses, from wells, those types of things, so there's protections in place, and there is a, over fifty percent of the province have onsite sewage disposal systems. So, it's quite common in rural areas, areas outside of towns and more dense areas for there to be homes serviced by onsite sewage disposal systems. It's the solution for a good part of Nova Scotia. Systems are typically designed to last about fifteen to thirty years. Some last longer, some don't last as long, so there's kind of a range in there, and I understand it is a wide range. There can be adverse impacts when there's malfunctions, and systems have malfunctioned, but again, there are regulations in place to require the owner to address those malfunctions. Some of the impacts could be impacts on groundwater quality, water courses, and human health, and that would be where you have a lot within a, within a small area. So, the town sewer bylaw right now only enables onsite septic's where the dwelling is located more than a hundred meters or three hundred and twenty-eight feet away from a street where there's central sewer, and that's because there's setback really far, it's a long lateral, those types of things where the bylaw has contemplated that. In those cases, we will enable the dwelling to be connected, or to be serviced by onsite. There is nothing in the bylaw right now that enables the use of an onsite sewage disposal system for lack of capacity, or for any dwelling that's closer than that hundred feet, so we'd have to look at an amendment to the sewer bylaw to accommodate that. So, in terms of considering an onsite sewage disposal system where there is lack of capacity and where the building may be closer than the hundred meters, closer than a hundred meters to the property line, there are some things that council may wish to consider. One is you do have a plan to address your, your storm water, and you're, and we will be bringing forward plans to address capacity. They're long-term plans, and those plans could be ten to fifteen more years, depending on where, where, where the property is located or the connection would be. But at some point, the capacity will be there. So, and, and those cases, council would want to ensure that connections happen, so you wouldn't want to allow a whole bunch of septic systems and run lines past them and, or have capacity open up and never be able to recover some of those fixed costs off those pipes. So, and, and as was kind of presented to council at a past meeting by a potential developer who wished to, to look at using one of these systems for the property, it wouldn't be unreasonable to look at conditions attached to that, to ensure that when capacity becomes available, and in the interest of the town and the sustainability of sewer system, that we would require those connections to occur at that time. So, the conditions that we were suggesting, if you wish to consider amendments to your sewer byli, bylaw, the conditions would be, one, there has to be no capacity, and that needs to be demonstrated by having a downstream wastewater capacity assessment done that actually says there's no capacity. So, it's not just an option, it's, it's a necessity. The landowner in the town would enter into an agreement that would be registered against the parcel, so if the property transfers hands, any, any title search would reveal this agreement. That would basically have a clause to say the town can ask for proof of maintenance. Again, these are regulated by Department of Environment, so I don't know if we want to get into too much in that area, but if there's concerns, we have the ability to ask. Require the property owner within six months' notice to connect to the town's wastewater system, and then remove the onsite system within twelve months of being notified of the requirement to connect. So, that ensures that when we have the capacity, that property will connect once we say the capacity is there, we request that you connect. You have six months to do it, twelve months to remove the system from, from the property. Enables the town to commence charging the sewer rate once the six months' notice period for connection has expired. Would require the property owner to pay, pay the wastewater betterment charge prior to connection, so those are all charges that we require. Would require the installation of laterals for connection to the central wastewater system be done by the property owner at their expense, and it would either be at the time water and storm sewer laterals are installed, because they'll be running laterals to the building for water and storm, or, or at the time of connection, whichever the engineer determines is in the best interest of the town. Sometime we wouldn't want that lateral run if we are planning on a sewer line replacement or anything like that, because the elevations could, could change, but it'd be up to the engineer to determine that, and it'd be clear in the agreement that the town puts the piece of the lateral on up to the, the property line, and then it's the property owner's responsibility after that, and stipulates that if the property owner fails to do anything required by the agreement, such as install the laterals or connect, the town would undertake the work and recovery as a first lien on the property. So, it gives you that protection that the work will be done and the connection would happen. So, that would be, that's what's being suggested as a, a kind of a middle ground to enabling onsite sewage disposal systems within the town where there is no capacity within our existing wastewater system. I would note that there is another alternative, and we've kind of danced slightly in this area before, and this is the, an offsetting program, and we would have to look at amendments to our wastewater betterment charges, and the whole concept of an offsetting program is if you put a thousand, a thousand liters in per day, you have to find a thousand liters to take out, so there's no more, no impact to the capacity within the pipe. If you want to put a thousand in, you get to find a way to take a thousand out. We had Design Point do some inflow and infiltration work for us back in 2021, and they had identified a list of possible options for reducing inflow, so manhole covers, roof leaders, different things like that. If you remember, there were some big properties identified that had huge impact on our storm system, where, and they're combined. We've undertaken some of that work, so some of that work's already been done. In addition to that, we've had New Development Connect, and it's been, it's been almost four years since that, they did that, that initial assessment, and for that reason, we are undertaking the flow monitoring and doing some of that assessment again, and we'll have a better picture of what possibilities are out there in terms of doing offsetting work that can take the storm out, so they can put sewer in. So, so it is an option. What we're saying is we're not quite ready to give you that option right now, because we have to do a little bit more homework, but we, if council wishes us to go down that road of looking at an offsetting program, we suggest that it be approved by council, and then the directive can be given, or the authority can be given to the town engineer to inter-enter these offsetting agreements that will enable development to occur by taking flow out before they put flow in. So, it, and it may be a more attractive option to a developer than the onsite. Certainly, I think from the town's perspective, it would be more attractive. Right now, as council's asked for, we have the amendments to the sewer bylaw that would, would enable the onsite septic system option under the conditions identified, and we are looking for a direction from council with respects to whether or not you wish us to implement a offsetting program, or implement, develop, and bring back to council for approval an offsetting program.
Questions, Councilor McDonald?
Sorry, just to clarify, are you suggesting a combination of both?
Yeah, allowing the first one.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
And the second one will come in behind, and it may, it may, like I say, to, to, to a property owner, might be a, a more attractive option, we're just not ready for it right now.
Good question. Other questions? Councilor McDonald?
On the onsite systems, just a question that came to mind. I recall hearing some, hearing something in the news, and I may be incorrect about it, because I couldn't find what I was looking for when I searched it, but the capacity for disposal of waste when it's, it's pumped from these systems at our site, I thought I had heard that some sites in H R M had closed, and the companies were kind of scrambling, looking for a place to, to dispose of the waste. What is our capacity like?
For our lagoons out at the waste site? I haven't been advised that we're at capacity. So, I mean, every time a home's built outside of town, that's how their septic systems get pumped, right? The sledge comes out of the tank, and that's what goes to our lagoons, and so they would, that's what if it happened here, you have to, I think the recommendation is every two years, you have your septic pumped, and so when they pump it, that truck takes that out to one settlement, and it gets disposed within the lagoons, and they get a, a process that that goes through. But I haven't, there's been no indication at the Joint Services Board that our lagoons are at capacity.
Okay.
Other questions on this? Councilor McDonald?
Where we are so dense and so close to our neighbors, has there been any consideration for how a neighboring property impacts a septic? You know, I don't know if what I do on my property, if I plant a willow tree on my property, I'm going to affect my neighbor's septic, because we're so close together.
In terms of the roots within the?
Right, and there may be a million circumstances like that.
Yeah, so they, they do have, I mean, the onsite sewage disposal regulations have setbacks from property lines, but I believe it's probably more for environmental protection really, so from wells and that type of thing. I wouldn't be able to say whether or not there's any consideration for the potential of future tree roots. You would certainly know about tree roots when you're putting in a disposal field and, and digging for a bed, but, but future, I'm not too sure.
Certainly, if you plant a willow tree, it's going to find a way. It was a great example of which tree not to plant near, near that.
Yeah, and, and I would suggest that probably it's going to be, I mean, the number of systems probably will be limited in town.
Right.
Yeah. And I think the one that was discussed, it was kind of a newer technology that was being used, so not maybe what we're used to in terms of its scale?
Right.
Yeah. Did you have another question?
I do, yeah. So, would it be fair to assume that, given the constraints of the size of our lots, that most systems would be a special system, not a regular system that we've seen put in a hundred times? We know the failure rates, we know, we have lots of information background?
Yeah, so, you know, Matt's actually a Q P one, right? Or whatever they call it now, qualified person? So, he's, he's, he might be a great one to answer the question, because I know there are standard systems for basic lot sizes. The smaller you go, they have to be designed, but Matt can.
It's years ago, Tammy.
I know. You're not that, you're not that old, though.
Yeah, so, given our, our typical lot sizes in town, that they, that certainly the size itself would be restrictive in terms of the options that could be implemented from, I guess, what they, for Q P two or Qualified Person Two, they have a certain selection they can pull from. If you, if your lot has a number of constraints on it, then you look to Qualified Person One, which is no longer the case, it's just you go to a, a qualified engineer, who then can design a system for yours, your site itself, the lot itself, and all the constraints, whether it's a smaller site or a regular size, depending where, where you want your home to take care of, to take advantage of any of the solar options that maybe exist, so. But yeah, we would have challenges with some of our lots in town, given the size.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be for everyone, that's for sure.
But there are newer technologies that does allow you to have an onsite system on smaller lots than traditionally, that would have happened in the, in the late nineties.
Okay.
So, I see this as a nice kind of middle ground to get us where we need to go until we're ready. It buys us some time while still having homes developed, which we need both, time and homes. So, are there questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Conklin, thank you.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice of intended approval of amendments to the public sewer bylaw, chapter twenty-four, as shown in appendix A, and hereby conduct first reading of bylaw two one seven, a bylaw to amend chapter twenty-four public sewer, sewer bylaw, and that town council direct staff to develop and bring to council for consideration a wastewater offsetting program and accompanying amendments to the wastewater betterment charges bylaw.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Caldwell. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Ten point one one, we have the discussion session notes for September third, where council heard about the code of conduct. That'll be coming back to council, but the province has developed a code of conduct for all municipal units, and so just a reminder to council, if you had any additions you wanted staff to look at, please through the C E O, send those forward. Reminder, of course, we're not remove, we can't remove anything from it, just enhance it. And then we talked about committees and commissions and board review, and again, all these are available for the public online. Now, we're down to business, to new business, sorry, town of Bridgewater pension plan change, and so this was an item that we discussed earlier, and you received an email from Amanda tonight on that. I don't know if you're going to speak to that?
So, the town has been looking at a, a change in pension plan for town employees, both union and non-unionized, excluding the, the police, the A P A, and this would see the town move from a defined contribution plan to the provincial P S S C, P S S P plan, which is the provincial defined benefit plan. And this is a relatively new opportunity for municipalities and nonprofits to move into, into that plan, and it's managed by the P S S P and their board, and their board of governors, who oversee the management of that plan. The town's contributions are fixed, there's, there's no, the town and the employees split that fifty-fifty. There's no obligation to fund deficits, it's all, it's all included in the employer, employee contributions. So, some of the reasons why municipalities in the past shied away from them, this plan's a lot larger and a lot more sustainable. So, it's an, it's an opportunity for the town, and certainly we have identified challenges in recruiting physicians because of some, some, some facts that they're coming from employers who have these types of plans that make it difficult to bring them on board with the town. So, we've looked at what would be required to do that, and the next steps are, of course, to look at changes to the Q P collective agreement, which were presented, and that would essentially remove reference to the defined contribution plan and replace that with the P S S B plan, and note it's a hundred percent participation rate, and we'd also require a motion from council to approve that, that transition or that move from the town's present defined contribution plan to the P S S P plan, and then from there, staff will work to prepare the participation agreement and define a date for which the move would occur.
Okay. Any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Frugier?
Yes, I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the language change to the-
Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Fugier?
Yes, I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the language change to the QP Local 1092 Collective Agreement to effect the move of unionized employees to the PSSP pension plan, and, subject to the union's approval of the same, direct staff to complete the steps to move eligible employees with the QP Collective Agreement to the PSSP Plan at a 100% participation level, and direct staff to complete the steps to move eligible non-unionized employees within the existing defined contribution plan to the PSSP Plan at 100% participation level.
Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Before I forget, we move to our next item. We do need to set a public hearing for 7.3, which was the maintains, the special commercial zone for 76 Dominion. We do need to set a public hearing, so I would ask for a motion to set a public hearing date for October 15th council meeting. Someone prepared to make that motion? Counselor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier. Is that good enough?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And I scroll back down. All right, so as we near the end of this council term, we have some meeting date changes off our regular schedule, and so obviously these will be published, but the last meeting really for the current council, the swearing-in of the newly elected council, it's going to take place on October 29th, so I need to move. Is that the correct date? Tuesday?
Yes. We have to do it then, because there's a period of time in which someone can request a challenge of vote, request a recount, so that would be the Monday.
Okay.
So you have to wait till the Tuesday.
Thank you. Lots of time. So that raises a good question. So we are doing entirely electronic voting, so I understand a recount can take a long time with a paper ballot. I would imagine that timeline is shortened, but there's no?
No, it's in the Act, so it says they have up until that date to challenge, so.
All right, is someone prepared to make that? So make sure you're around on that Tuesday, please. Someone prepared to make that motion? Nobody wants to go to Tuesday. Counselor McDonald?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater schedule a special council meeting for October 29th, 2024, to swear in the newly elected council for 2024 to 2028.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Conklin. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We have an in-camera meeting following this. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Deputy Mayor Fugier, seconded by Counselor McDonald. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.